I'd like to call to order the September 2, 2014 meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join me in prayer. God thank you for the working men and women who live in our community. We just got out of Labor Day. We took a vacation. Don't know if we appreciated the men and women who labor for us every day. There are people that work with their hands and backs and literally and figuratively are the backbone of our society. Keep them in good health and safety as they perform the work that makes our economy move and grow. Help government, including local government, craft reasonable laws and ordinances to protect them from physical harm as they work for our benefit. Bless our national, state, and local leaders as they consider laws during meetings, debate, and public hearings. Help us on this commission to consider our agenda in a wise, compassionate, and humble manner. Amen.
Amen.
In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the commission, it's the duty of every commissioner to avoid both the potential and actual conflict of interest on any matter that comes before us. Does any commissioner have any known or possible conflict of interest with respect to any matter that we might hear tonight? If not, we'll move to public comment. I would ask, we are going to have a public hearing on the road closing at Oak Street. So if anyone is here on the Oak Street closing, I'd ask you to, there will be another time for you to do your public comments during that public hearing slot. The time limit for any comment to the commission is three minutes. If your time expires, then you may leave any question along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager or county clerk to the board. Commissioners are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. It's your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of this commission or pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comments shall address the entire board. Any polling of board members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the commission are expected to observe the decorum of the board and be respectful of everyone in the room, whether you agree with their opinions or not. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. And the commission deserves, reserves the right to deny public address on any subject that we've previously taken up and decided. Is there any public comment tonight? If not, okay, two, Lisa Baldwin, school board member. And then Mr. Rice will be after Ms. Baldwin.
My name is Lisa Baldwin. I'm a wife, I'm a mother of four children, and a member of the Buncombe County Board of Education. It is my concern for children that I'm here today. I noticed you had an item called Commitment of Spec Building Proceeds Jacob Holm Way. When I looked at this, I felt like it was a very disguised item on the agenda, and I'm asking that you table this decision until the public has time to understand and view the documentation related to this request. I'd like to know who the INCA Youth Sports Organization is that's requesting the $1.3 million. I'd like to know what due diligence has been done as far as the site, may include a landfill, I'm not sure, because there's no identification of the 90 acres that will be donated, and maybe we'll hear about this later, but public comment comes before the presentation. So I have no way, I have to guess at what's coming next. I would just like to make sure that you do ask questions as an oversight board. You know, the landfill has been monitored for seepage and emission of harmful gases. You also know that Hominy Creek is the pathway for contamination, and if children are to be on the site of these ball fields, I think there should be concern and there should be, you know, oversight of the property and that there is a cleanup that occurs before this becomes a ball field, possibly for children. I think that the landfill has Brownfield certification. This allows indemnification to anyone who wants to clean it up. That means that nobody is held responsible if someone does get sick on the property from any contaminants that might be present. So I think you should also, you know, be concerned that where would be the responsibility lie if there is contamination that causes illness in the future there. So I just hope you will, you know, as an oversight board, you know, consider every possibility before you decide to donate the $1.3 million to an organization that many people have never heard of, the INCA Youth Sports Organization, and also look into the credibility of that group as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Mr. Rice? Anyone want to speak after Mr. Rice in public comment section of our meeting?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. They've been about three of you commissioners have seen the plats of the INCA property and heard a little presentation under the CRA, Cultural Recreation Authority, at the time. There's been no open discussion about this at all. They've been stuff presented to you, but you just haven't talked, and I am absolutely astonished in some way that I've offered my assistance to talk to any board member or all of you about this contamination, and not a one of you, since July 13 at the meeting in INCA Candler at the library, not even our representative, Mr. Belcher, Mr. King, has even offered me an opportunity to speak to them about the contamination or any part of this. And this is much bigger. You know, when the BASF site was sited at the OTM building in INCA, where the Blue Ridge Food is right now, there was 2,100 parts per billion of TCE under that building, and it was contaminated very, very bad and still is. No one is addressing that question, not even AB Tech. Nothing is being done in the media. The media has got a gag order on it, and I believe it's coming right from the commissioners themselves. If it's all of you or one of you, it's still coming from this board. The media does not want to touch this. I've even had one media person in a very good newspaper say he didn't want no lawsuits. So that tells me something right there. And the other thing is, on this particular sports people that's wanting this property, why in the world would a man give property to somebody of 90 acres as a gift? It sounds like the repeat of 2000, when the property was donated to Buncombe County and AB Tech and got the contamination of 2,100 parts per billion of TCE and other contaminants under this building. It was a gift, and now what is it? It's a contaminated building that nobody wants to talk about, nobody wants to tell anybody about. And the funny thing about it is, the legal representation of this property goes right back to Roberts and Stevens, that is, the attorney for AB Tech, Buncombe County School, and also associated with Buncombe County Commissioners through another person on the other side, which is Roberts and Stevens, and that's Mr. Bill from the Air Pollution Control Board at one time. He is also represented from Roberts and Stevens on the opposite side. Now, how can you get a real estimate of what's going on when you've got one law firm that's controlling everything? And to me, you have not done due diligence, period, since 2013, and you obtained this property through AB Tech, and you're not telling the public how awful this place was and is, even today. I've got more to say, and we'll explain it later.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment today? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to follow the agenda as we've discussed it in pre-meeting and has been published before us. Is there a motion to follow the agenda as presented?
Yes, sir.
Second. It's been a motion by Vice Chair Frost, a second by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion or any items that we want to change? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero to follow the agenda as it's been published. Is Mr. Lee here?
James Lee?
Yes.
I'm Sharon Ockston.
Okay, Ms. Ockston, good. Mr. Jones will present the proclamation. You can come on up. Thank you for being here.
Sorry, thank you.
Sharon's done this a few times, because this is year 31 for y'all, and it's something we look forward to in our community every year. And I was just looking with technology of all the things that are coming up in your events, so maybe after I read this into the record, maybe you can share some of the good exposure that's going to happen for our minority businesses during that week.
I would definitely be glad to.
So I would like to read this into the record without my reading glasses. Yikes. Okay, I can do it. No, it's big enough font, it's good. So this is for Minority Enterprise Development Week.
We got another person.
Jane Hatley's in the house. That's okay, you're just exactly in time.
I know, I sit there punching my phone. I'm here, y'all, I'm here.
That's great, thank you, and I think my glasses are getting delivered.
Mr. Belcher has kindly brought specs to Mr. Jones.
So, whereas strong and vibrant communities involve all citizens in economic progress, and whereas minority entrepreneurs make significant contributions to our community, and whereas as we enter in an era of expanded opportunities in economic growth and development and face the economic challenges ahead, it is appropriate that we encourage minority business owners by recognizing their contributions toward the continued economic development of our community. And whereas nationally, Minority Enterprise Development Week is recognized for its importance as economic challenges continue on the national level, and whereas Minority Enterprise Development Week of Western North Carolina Incorporated has provided training and a week-long celebration of minority-owned businesses for the past 31 years. Wow. Whereas local observation of Minority Enterprise Development Week will be the week of September 8 through the 14th. Now therefore, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, and David Gant, Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners for Buncombe, does hereby proclaim the week of September 8 through 14, 2014, as Minority Enterprise Development Week in the City of Asheville and the County of Buncombe, and urges all citizens to join the observances of minority business enterprise events. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, we're going to say a few words. Yeah, I think we should. This is, as we said, our 31st year, as Holly said, our 31st year here with Minority Enterprise Development Week. This has been going on since this was instituted by Robert Reagan back in 1980, so we're very proud that this year, we can honestly say, we're not just having a Minority Enterprise Development Week, we have been doing events every month for the past year. We have really worked hard to garner investment and resources from the community so that we could serve minorities during the year. Both Jane and I serve on the board. I'm Vice Chair, James Lee is Chair, and we have a very diverse board this year. So some of the events that we're doing next week, you can tell us about one, we're going to do it at Self-Health.
We're having a Meet Your Lender panel at Self-Health with representatives of the Support Center and Self-Health and Mountain Biz Works and two banks, and it's basically speed dating for entrepreneurs to go around and meet each of them and ask their questions.
And we thank Jane for opening up her organization for us to allow us to come in and do that. September the 8th, there will be, at Mountain Biz Works, there will be Meet Your Board of Directors, so you can meet the folks who bring you MedWeek and understand why they do this work during the year. On Tuesday of next week, that will be the 9th, at AB Tech, we will be offering an SBA, Small Business, Bring Your Own Lunch to that event. The SBA will be talking about how you can actually start up your own business, Small Business Administration. And then the big event is September the 11th, and that will be at Homewood. Those will be the awards. We have some really wonderful businesses that are receiving some awards, and what's so very interesting, I think we have kind of filled out this agenda that happens on September the 11th, so we have a lot of entertainment, and we have minority business that will be catering. And last year, Cherokee, what was it, the Cherokee Tribe came and danced. This year, we have a surprise event for this event. And on September the 12th, over in Eagle Market Streets, block by block, Stephanie Twitty will be presenting the Business Incubator over there from 9 until 12. Most of these events include refreshments, and we will be glad to see any and all of you there.
Hope you can come.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have a good news presentation by the Asheville Humane Society Shelter and Adoption Update. I think we have Mr. John Haas here, Chairman of the Humane Society, and Jennifer Briler is interim president. So thank you for being here, folks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Haas, and I'm the incoming Board Chair for the Asheville Humane Society. I want to thank you first for allowing us today to present to you some amazing accomplishments of the Asheville Humane Society during our last fiscal year. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you for your trust and your faith in allowing us to operate the Buncombe County Animal Shelter. As you know, this animal shelter accepts any animal from Buncombe County, regardless of its condition, regardless of its health, and regardless of its temperament. Through the great work of our staff and our volunteers, and the innovative programs that we have at the Asheville Humane Society, we have saved a record number of animal lives this fiscal year. I'd like to introduce to you Jennifer Briler, our interim president, who's going to share with you some of our amazing accomplishments this year. Jennifer?
Thank you, John. Chairman Gant, Commissioners, others in the room, again, I want to echo what John has said. We've had an amazing year, and really, it is thanks to our public-private partnership with Buncombe County Government. Just the resources you provide, the guidance in Jim Holland and Mandy Stone, and the wonderful work that Kathy Hughes and Max and their team does to really promote the adoptable animals and just really get the word out about the fantastic work that happens in that public-private partnership. So again, I really appreciate you having us here today, and I'm going to share with you a lot of great information, and it's a time to celebrate this past year. Looked like it was up, sorry. Okay, so as we know, in December 2006, the county commissioners set a goal of no healthy animals to be euthanized by 2012. That kind of spearheaded moving us forward, really, for this fantastic goal and to provide service to our citizens and our animals. In July 2008, you may remember that the ASPCA Community Partnership began with Asheville Humane Society and the Humane Alliance. What that did is it brought in a national organization with a lot of resources, both financially and education-wise, for our staff and volunteers and for our community, and brought in a number of resources that really helped us focus and spearhead innovative programs to save the lives of the animals at the Buncombe County Animal Shelter. In August 2010, happy to report that no healthy animal has been euthanized since August 2010. And those are animals that in the past, prior to that, we're talking litters of puppies, kittens, dogs, and cats that just because of their sheer age of being six or older, were unfortunately being euthanized at that time, for lack of resources, quite frankly. In September 2010, we may remember that the new Buncombe County Animal Care Campus, that joint public partnership that was developed together, was opened. We had a fantastic opening, and we've just really done amazing things with both facilities, the Asheville Humane Society Adoption Center and the Buncombe County Animal Shelter. In May 2013, Asheville Humane Society and Animal Compassion Network integrated as one. It was a local organization you may be familiar with. They were a safe-for-life, limited-admission, fostering, and adoption facility. And so it was really a unique partnership that we realized that our goals together, our life-saving work, was really starting to meld together, and we were able to partner and join as one. And now for the amazing news of this past year, our record-breaking lives saved for fiscal year 2013-2014, 5,599 animals that came into the Buncombe County Animal Shelter and citizen animals that needed support as well were saved through our innovative programings. Our work's not done. As you can see, 6,579 homeless animals were admitted through the Buncombe County Animal Shelter last year. So how do we save these animals through collaboration? As you can see on the pie chart, Asheville Humane Society innovative programs are responsible for over 87% of those animals that left alive. Now, we do this in partnership with other organizations, and as you can see, next would be Brother Wolf Animal Rescue at just under 9% of lives saved, Friends to Ferals at about 2%, and then various other organizations, breed rescue organizations as well. So for Asheville Humane Society innovative program, we saved over 3,000 homeless animals through our adoption program alone. Over 1,000 animals were reunited with their worried families. That's both animals that came into the shelter, and we also assisted in additional 150 animals through just word-of-mouth, checking lost reports, and stopping animals from coming into the shelter, making those connections prior to them walking through our doors. Asheville Humane Society placed nearly 900 animals through our relocation program. That's taking animals outside of our community to other communities to where they may not have as many animals or the same types of animals. You know, we've done amazing work here in this community with spay-neuter, having Humane Alliance here as well, but we still have a lot of kittens and a lot of puppies coming in, as well as adult animals that have some challenges, both behaviorally and medically. Couple of years ago, we started our Safety Net Program. In this past year, almost 500 animals received Safety Net service. What that is, in the past, if you had an animal that needed some sort of assistance, whether it was behavior or medical, and it came to the Buncombe County Animal Shelter, the only recourse we had was either euthanasia, correcting whatever that challenge was, and then rehoming the animal. And you, your beloved pet, was not, you didn't get it back. And so we looked at that, and we said, that doesn't make sense. What we did is we took a turn and decided we are going to look and focus at our citizens and really help them keep their pets. So now, when someone's struggling financially to provide care for their animal, we can help them with that, so the animal never comes into the doors of the Buncombe County Animal Shelter. Again, a big thank you to the Commissioners. You have, for the last few years, provided funding for our citizens, our neediest citizens who just financially cannot afford to spay or neuter their pet. Does not mean they don't deserve to have that animal. You have really made such a commitment to provide those spay-neuter vouchers to the citizens of our community, to help reduce animal homelessness and overpopulation, and keep families together. We provided, through our Safety Net Program, over 20,000 pounds of pet food to citizens in need. We work with 13 food pantries to provide food, because what pantries were finding is a lot of individuals were providing their own food to their pets, and they were going hungry. So we partner with them, so they do not have to go hungry either. We placed nearly 1,800 animals through our foster care program. Those are animals that were either too young, too sick, injured, or just needed a break, quite frankly, from the sheltering environment. We placed those through foster care till they could be eventually adopted. Almost 900 volunteers, 900 of our citizens, provided over 80,000 hours of their time to provide to our programs and to the animals that we care for. So in total, 5,599 animals, Buncombe County animals' lives were saved this past year, and 100% is that thanks to our public-private partnership and all the support that Buncombe County Government, our volunteers, adopters, supporters, just that the community provides to Asheville Humane Society. So thank you so much.
I'd like to take a moment to thank you for the great work that you do. I think it was 1999, I was at the old shelter, and I saw a beautiful black Labrador being taken back to be euthanized, and I said, what's wrong with him? And everybody was very sad. They said, there's nothing wrong with him. We don't have room. And you have worked incredibly to make it so that that never happens again, and I'd urge everyone to reach out, foster, volunteer, because it's an amazing organization, and you can make a profound difference in your life and someone else's life by helping.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to add one thing that's kind of, you know, I keep my daughter away from y'all. So, because I know what my home would be like. But you know, the other thing that's exciting about what you've shared is that y'all set these metrics, right, back in 2016, and they were ambitious, but they were also within your grasp. And with this collaboration, you know, talking about the public-private, but also all the groups coming together and probably putting aside some turf and whatnot. Anyway, I just think that that is so important to recognize, that goals do matter, and when you do have a goal, and you're all kind of pushing on the same lever there, it can work out. And what was it, like 17 months early, too? So I just, I like it when we see those good outcomes and want to hold those up for the community, because sometimes I think we set goals and we just assume that, you know, they don't mean anything. And y'all really took it seriously, and you made us proud, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, both of you, John and Jennifer. That was a great day, we opened it up. I think Mr. Jones and I were there for that one, as well as the staff. It was a good day for everybody.
I think puppies here.
Yeah.
Mascots.
All right, thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on the road closing at Oak Street. It's an unopened road in Candler, and I think we have Attorney Betsy Flack here, is going to talk to us about that. Betsy, come on up and tell us what we have here.
It's unfair that I have to follow puppies and kittens. This is not going to be that interesting. I do have on a thumb drive, if you all want to see it, I believe all of the Commissioners have maps, but if you would like for me to do this, I can put it up on the screen if necessary. This is just a petition to close an unopened road called Oak Street in Candler. It runs off of Maple Ridge Road. There's a development back in there, and Oak Street has never been opened as a public road. It's never been maintained by any Department of Transportation. And there are four property owners, well, three property owners essentially, on that road. Kenneth and Brenda Sams, Freddie Sams, and Beverly Childers Goodson. All of those property owners have signed on the petition that they agree to the closing of the road. It's essentially a driveway, and all of these family members own all of it, except for 15 feet, which is owned by Ms. Goodson, and that is in parcel 9607-545629. But she does not use the road to access her property at all. So that's the proposal. I believe everyone affected agrees, and I have no objection to the proposal.
Have we notified everyone in the neighborhood? Everyone's had a chance to weigh in on this?
I posted public notices on the road, at either end of the road. Those were posted on August the 11th. I have some photos of the postings, if you'd like to see them.
That's good enough.
So.
Okay. All righty. Are there any questions for Ms. Flack at this point?
I have a couple of questions. And if the staff have any perspective on this, too, feel free to chime in. If I'm looking at the map, if I'm reading the map correctly, would there be a parcel that would be, you know, would lose any public right-of-way access if this is closed?
No, there is not.
The map I'm looking at, the parcel is highlighted for The map I'm looking at, the parcel is highlighted 4972?
Yes, 4972 is, if you, if you read in the petition, the Oak Street, Oak Street, it dead-ends into 4972, which is owned by Kenneth Sams, who also agrees to the closure of the road. So, that is, that is also a parcel owned by this same family.
Okay. And then I guess maybe, maybe, maybe more directly to the staff, if they have any opinions about this. So if we close this paper street, in essence, so is there any, I mean, is there any foreseeable need for public right-of-way or access in this, in this location for any kind of future public transportation or greenway or any other? I mean, we're basically giving up the, the potential for having public, a public right-of-way. So is there any downside to that that we need to keep in mind?
I checked with Mr. Frew while, while we were here, and he said that, that legally it just splits the property that's in the road into the parcels, but he didn't say that there was any real ability to do a greenway there.
Okay, great. I have no, no concerns then.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we start our public comment?
Yeah, I've got to come in. I'm, I'm very familiar with this, this property. It's actually, if you, if you could see the, the slope, it's actually on top, very top of the hill. And these are just the family property there. And the, the road's never been used for, for a long time. It's actually near my church for 30 years, so it's a pretty reasonable request, for sure.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we do public hearing? Thank you, Ms. Flack.
Thank you.
If not, we'll go ahead and start the public hearing at 4:58. Any members of, any members of the public wish to be heard on this road closing? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members Board. Joe, you didn't elaborate, but isn't Maple Ridge Church on the corner of that road?
It doesn't touch it. It's across from Ridge Street. Maple Ridge is across from Ridge Street.
Is it the one on the right going up the hill?
On the corner of Ridge and...
We don't have a picture up, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out which one it is. Which road is it? Is it, is it on the same side the church is on, or is it on the right side going across to, to that direction? It's hard to make a comment when you don't know where it's at.
It does not touch the property for Maple Ridge. It is across the street from Maple Ridge Baptist Church, on the lower end of the property. It does not touch it.
So it doesn't touch the property of the church? Okay. I know the Sams as well. I've known them for 50 years. I just wondered, if that road was the one that passed in front of the church, I'd never heard the name of it. Okay. All right. Thank you for the information.
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's a plat attached to the agenda. Okay, any other public comment? If not, I'll declare the public hearing on this road closing terminated at 5:02. Any discussion or any motions on the road closing?
I can make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Belcher, second by Vice Chair Frost. Is there any further discussion or questions, comments on this road closure? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then the road closure is adopted by a seven-to-zero vote. Thank you, Ms. Flack, for being here. Next, we have new business. We have a commitment of spec building proceeds, Jacob Holmway. We have Dr. Wanda Green going to tell us a little bit about this and then, I assume, hand it off to some other interested individuals.
I'm going to do that, but for just a second, I'm going to do just a county manager update very quickly.
All right.
We, you know, we offered early retirement with some commitment to save us over a million dollars. That period to enroll and decide to take early retirement ended on the 22nd of August, and then they had seven days to change their mind, just to meet the federal requirements. Would like to just give you the update that 131 people opted to take early retirement, which was significantly more than I expected. But we should know in the, they will all be exiting the county on September the 30th, if not, if they haven't already left. So we will be a few weeks being able to get all the savings information together, but very successful program, and we are losing a lot of institutional wisdom, which has been, it's been a little bit tougher than we expected, but I think everybody's very happy with the results. Just so, so you know what to expect. Now, if we can get on with the, the donation of the proceeds from the spec building, this is, we have for a number of years worked with Fletcher Partners and some others to try to, to develop some ball fields and that, on some land that they were willing to donate. So what we're going to ask you at the end of the hearing, or the presentation tonight, is to dedicate $1.3 million that we will receive from the sale of a spec building. We will be bringing you that in the next couple of meetings, because we are negotiating a sale on that and have reached some terms. And the, the donation is contingent upon several things, that, that we do sell the spec building to the private investor, that the INCA Youth Sports Organization, which is a nonprofit corporation, secures the 90-acre site through a donation, and that the INCA Youth Sports Organization secures $2.4 million in funding from TDA Product Development Fund and a million dollars in private donations. We do have with us tonight, and Mr. Martin Lewis, a member of the Fletcher Partners, that'll start the presentation, and he has others he's going to introduce.
County Commissioners, County Manager and Staff, thank you. Thank you for what you do and for allowing us to be here tonight. I am going to just show a couple of slides. Okay? This is a property, the former started as, in 1929, INCA built a plant on this property off of what is now Interstate 40. We purchased in early 2000, the property was put on the market by BASF, 1,300 acres. There were two partnerships that bought the property. One was Billmore Farms and the other was Fletcher Partners. Fletcher Partners bought most, most of our property was along Sand Hill Road. It was retail, it was multifamily. It had the village area where the library and the post office currently are. And we bought about 175 acres, which is at the top of this page, you'll see labeled Asheville Commerce Park. And that was in 2000. In 2005, we became aware that we could buy approximately 200 more acres from Cobine. And this is property on the north side of Sand Hill Road. We acquired the property in 2008, and you can see from this slide, in 2008, we did demolition and, and demolished approximately 800,000 square feet of the former plant. We were able to salvage the steel. We actually had a, a freight car that came on the site and would go through a railroad spur, would go down to Birmingham, Alabama. We were able to sell approximately 16 tractor-trailer loads of heart pine timbers, which were in the roofing system. They're being used as floors. And then we were also able to sell blocks and bricks from the former plant. They became a little, the, the demand for those were very strong. This is what you see here. When we closed on the property in, in 2008, we were charged with coming up with a master plan on the property. And this, if you fly over the property today, this is what you see. You'll notice that we kept the clock tower. The clock tower is approximately 185 feet tall. That'll be the focal point for the development. We, as developers, have made the commitment to the local community to put INCA back on the clock towers. And, and we will do that. You'll see where the proposed ball fields. Originally, we were proposing about a 40-acre site for a sports complex. That has evolved over the years, and today, this is the current master plan for this property. You can see where the demoed area was, is the, what is labeled on this site, the retail component. You'll see where the bridge is coming off of 1923 into the property, and you'll also see the proposed sports complex. And then you'll, you'll see the actual commerce part of this property. And you can see where Jacob Holm is on the front. You can see where Buncombe County Schools purchased the property for the intermediate school. You can see where New Belgium has located their new facility. You can see where Wicked Weed is going in the former Shell Building. And then at the bottom of that hill is where we're proposing one section of the ball fields. Where the sports complex has had several gyrations. Originally, we were doing a layout, it was a real estate broker and a, an engineer doing the original layout. We then hired a landscape architect to help us. And then, most recently, we have hired Jason Gilliland, who is a landscape architect, to help with this layout. Jason is here. Jason is an expert in both passive and active parks. He will, is here to speak to why we did distances on the fields, how the layout, the flow of the fields. Also, Will Bowie is here. Will Bowie, both of these individuals have a lot of brain power. Will was the engineer for the original 1,300-acre site with Billmore Farms. He did the engineering on that property. He's done the engineering on our industrial complex, the retail developments, and our office buildings. A lot of knowledge. What we are proposing, and I'll take it one more slide. This is the actual sports complex that we are proposing. It is a little over 90 acres of land. There is approximately 30 acres of this that is a closed landfill. There is property along Hominy Creek that's in the floodway. And then there's approximately 30 acres that's what we call good property, that, that could be sold to an industrial tenant. This was a decision, I think someone had asked why someone would donate this kind of property. Fletcher Partners, it's made up of five individuals, and we are all active in, in the community. And we felt that there was a need for the baseball complex, softball complex. And we feel that this is a, a good thing to have in the community, and, and we would like to, to see it to fruition and wanted to donate this property. Where we are today is, we have currently raised $750,000 in donations. That's something we started about 50 days ago. If you look at where, we're here today asking for the 1.3 million. If you take the 1.3 million and you add the 750,000 to it, that gets you to 2,050,000. If you add, and we're successful with the Tourism Product Development Fund of 2.4 million, that raises you up to 4,450,000. Fran Nager with Duckwork Jacobs, Nager and Swiscood did an appraisal on the property. That appraisal came back at 5,250,000. We also have a local bank who has said that they would loan up to a million dollars to the nonprofit to see this development through. So we feel very good. But your 1.3 million is imperative to this, this project to moving forward. The difference this year with the Tourism Product Development Fund, in years past, it has been more of a grant. This year, it's in the form of a matching grant. The cost to do the sports complexes, as you've seen, is 5.3 million, is our budget. Of that 5.3 million, we had budgeted approximately 500,000 for soft costs, which are engineering, architectural fees, permits. I'll be quick to say there are no real estate fees or development fees in that, in those funds. But you deduct the 500,000 from the 4.3, that's how you get to the 4.8, and you divide that in half. So it was our job to try to raise the 2.4 million in the matching grant. We feel very, from the demand for ball fields is, is very strong. I can speak as a parent of four children that range in age from six to 16. And it seems like through the years, the way that we do sports, things have changed. I know we waited eight years before we had children. And we would see our friends taking their kids all over the country, all, all over the southeast. And we kind of set our rules. We said, "We'll never be like that. We won't do that." Well, if your children are going to play sports, that's kind of the way things are now, that, that you do go, whether it's, whether it's soccer, whether it's baseball, whether it's basketball. And we feel like this would give the, the local families a place to go to play and travel tournaments on the weekends. It would have a, the availability during the week to local sports organizations to use. And we feel like it would be a, a huge benefit to the area as far as recruitment, as far as new families or new businesses that are looking at coming into the market. They want to see these facilities. Not to mention that it would be a, a huge economic generator to the area. Will Bowie and Jason Gilliland are very knowledgeable, can speak to details. What else can I tell you about this project? We're very excited about it. We've, we've been working on this since 2008. A lot of sweat and tears and angst. It went through, the plan was originally approved through City Council in November of 2010. That was a, on the master plan that we had, had come up with. That was something, at that time, the former plant is in the city of Asheville. You had the ETJ. We had one chance to present our plan to City Council, and they gave either an up or down vote. So we were, needless to say, very anxious about that hearing. And we took the better part of eight months, just going and talking to the neighbors, talking to Billmore Lake, Inca Village, the neigh- any neighborhood that was out there. We made the contacts, business owners. And we, we talked about what we were planning there, and what, in churches. But overwhelmingly, we had no negative response, all positive. We, we heard many times that we need a place to shop, a place to eat. We'd like to have a place for the recreation. We have a, roughly a two-mile greenway proposed on the, on Hominy Creek. That went over. The two things that we heard that, that were interesting, out of all the meetings, Will Bowie and I were the ones going and holding the meetings, the questions were, "Well, when can we go to eat at our, our Starbucks? And then, are you going to have a dog park?" And, but those are just two interesting things, two takeaways from the discussions.
I'd like to thank you for having the patience to, it's mine, you've been working on this for six years?
We have.
And thank you for the patience and the foresight to pursue this, and makes my heartbeat faster when nonprofits and economic development go hand in hand. And I think it shows great vision, and I think it's a tremendous asset in the community. And I think I just had a couple of, you know, as long as there will be public access for it, and the greenways will be completed.
Sure.
And maybe a dog park.
Yeah, we have to have a dog. And, and one thing, Karen Craig-Nolan with Riverlink has agreed to take over the trails and, and maintain those on the, on the creek.
So could you, could you just follow up about, a little bit about that on the, and then I've got a couple of questions as well. So there will be greenway trails on there, so like how?
What we are doing today, this is, the, the map that was up, that was the property called INCA Center. That's the overall development. And within that INCA development, INCA Center development, there is a, a trail along Hominy Creek. There's the retail component, and there's also the, the ball fields. The funding, the 5.3 million, does not include the funding for the trails along Hominy Creek.
Okay. So, or is the idea for the trails on this piece of property, or is it on the other one?
It would be on both. It would actually be on the, the retail track along Hominy Creek, and it would also be along, it would be this property that is donated within that property as well.
That's, that's a, a project after this?
That's correct.
I got you, kind of phasing it.
Correct.
And so, another follow-up to Commissioner, Vice Chair Frost, and then I've got a couple more. So how, so you very beautifully articulated the, the access to the, to the local sports teams that will happen. Is, is that the, is that the avenue, kind of through organized teams and leagues? Is that how the public would access the, the fields in the future?
The idea on the fields was that on the weekends, it would be set for travel ball, travel tournaments to access the fields. With those, when you have teams, if you have, we've done conservative numbers with the Tourism Product Development Tourism Product Development application. It is fairly detailed. You have to have a, a business plan, you have to have your marketing plan. And what we're calling for is, it would be in the first year approximately 12 tournaments. And if you had, say, 20 to 25 teams in those tournaments, the idea is you probably have about five teams that would be local, and the other teams would be coming from other areas. Right now, if you look at markets that have these facilities, they're in upper state, South Carolina, they're in Kingsport, Tennessee. Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, has a very nice one. But the, the idea is to build this facility, you would have through local corporate sponsorships, through banners putting up in the outfield, through entrance fees and through gate fees as folks come in, that the facility would be self-sustaining, that there would not be any constant, any monies that would be put in each year. But then the access would be during the week for the local folks to use those, those fields, absolutely.
So that's how, like, you've got a church softball league that wants to use it.
Absolutely.
They would call up somebody and say, reserve and pay their fee or whatever.
That's correct.
And that's how that would happen during the week part.
That's correct.
So the revenue generating part would happen in the weekend.
That's correct.
So the vision is, is through, basically, that's your, going to be your cash cow to, to support this larger public good.
Right.
So, so let's talk a second about, make, I mean, it makes a lot of sense to me. Let's talk a little bit about the operational plan in general. So it is, are you currently, you're a 501 incorporated entity?
Yes. The Inca Youth Sports Organization was approved within the last two to three weeks. That was approved as a, we have not received the status as a 501(c)(3). It's my understanding that takes a little bit of time. That has been applied for, we're in that process. The group, the idea would be that you have Fletcher Partners, who's made up of the five individuals, would donate the property to the Inca Youth Sports Organization. That organization is made up of seven individuals. Currently, four of the individuals, we, we know four folks that will be on that board. The individuals who are currently on the board, one is Stuart Weedy, that has Blossoming Gas, is an owner. The other is Brian Dewine, his family owns the Asheville Tourist. There's a lady by the name of Debbie Wilson, who is a local community advocate. And then I've asked to be on that, that board as well. So that, those four make up the seven. And the idea would be that that entity would take possession of the property, they would oversee the development. You have Will and you have Jason that would oversee the design, the bidding of the project. And then the, we have a financial CFO that would administer the financial side of the property, of the funds as they came in.
I got you. So in terms of coming to us today, I mean, the, like I said, I think it's a sound plan. You know, obviously, your credibility in the community is stellar.
Well, thank you.
So, and, and your, and your company's investment in this part of our county is, you know, we're very thankful for that. That said, it, you know, we got a, we're getting ready to kind of have a nonprofit with, you know, this, this, the ink's not dry.
Right.
There's, there's no, there's no financials to look at, there's, you know, there's, so we're kind of going out here on faith, so, and it's a, it's a big dollar amount. But I believe in you. So, but I'm just, I just want to say that, in terms of the, you know, transparency and public accountability, that that is, that's outside our, you know, our norm. That's outside our, what, how we usually do things. I think it's okay. I think, I think that you have, you have rules and guidelines for a reason, but I think you don't, you're not locked into them when you have an opportunity to do the good of the public and to deliver something in the community. But, you know, particularly as it's, it's taxpayers' money, you know, because that, that building was built with taxpayer money, so we're committing that to, to this public good. And I just wanted to be really clear on that. So, but, but the idea for this, for your 501(c)(3)'s operational plan, which sounds like it's really spelled out in the TDA application, is that it would be, that, that y'all would do kind of whatever fundraising that you would have to do to, to maintain the fields, further capital projects. So it's not necessarily anything you'd be looking to local government, either our government or the city for. Y'all, y'all are going to be
That's right.
The little engine that could, right?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Can I also, and I think those are great questions to ask. In the past, there's been some discussion of funding nonprofits, wondering about administrative costs. And as Commissioner Jones said, you know, you, you're standing in the community, so it is a leap of faith, but I think there are times you do things out of the budget cycle, you know, and as Commissioner Jones said, you don't get bogged down in percentages.
I have a question, Martin. What, what about the, what are, will there be charges for the local teams during the week?
Yes, there will be.
And what will be the fees for the, or ballpark? I, I know it's a lot of it's out there, but is it, yeah, ballpark, ballpark.
Ballpark.
Probably the best way to explain that, you've got a, a board, the, the actual Inca Youth Sports Organization will be made up of individuals. But below you, we will actually hire someone to be the Director of Operations, who will actually run the tournaments. And then we'll have a General Director too, that will oversee the fundraising. And we have identified the Director of Operations. We, we think we have someone that would be what I would call the General Director. Those folks would be in charge of setting those fees. David, I can go on past experience and just some budget numbers that we've used, but anywhere from, you've got teams that are made up of usually 12 individuals, 12 players, and those fees run anywhere from 240 to 350 dollars for a tournament entry fee. And usually what you get by that tournament, you're guaranteed three to four games, or four games per weekend as a travel tournament baseball.
Actually, I was more focused on during the week, the teams.
Oh, during the week, I think
The local teams that, you know, from, say, Monday through Thursday.
I think our idea there that has been, and it, it is something that is evolving, but the thought would be, if you've got local folks, we just don't, we want to make sure that those fields are not torn up. That if someone, you have someone, if John Smith's coming to use the properties, will he make sure that when they leave, we're not having to come behind him to fix those up?
Okay, so you wouldn't anticipate?
If there is a fee, it would be very minimal. I don't anticipate a large fee at all.
Okay, the reason I'm asking that one is, some of the staff remember, we, we did all the ball fields. And the, the understanding was that the youth leagues, football teams could use them, because now we have, instead of grass that would be damaged, we have turf. And my understanding from a lot of the football coaches were that that didn't happen.
Okay.
Or it didn't happen to the degree that we had thought. And so I think, you know, that's, that's a big deal
Yeah.
To me, because I, I think it's one thing to do heads in beds and maybe some local people half and half, that's good. Probably sufficient, but the real clincher for me is that you do want folks that maybe don't have the resources to do these tournaments.
Absolutely.
Or, you know, and in particular, I'd be, but, but I think the way you've structured, again, going back to some of the questions that have been asked, it's local people, it's not a for-profit that's coming in here and we're going to do everything we can to, to make a buck. I think you're, you're, you're very modest about what, what you're doing, and, and we appreciate that, because it just looks like you got your heart in the right place. And knowing you personally for many years, I, I know you do. And, and so, as long as you're there, I'm good. I'd just like to hear it on the record, that this is something, that that's your, that's the principles that the whole organization is pinned on.
Our whole driving force is to make it accessible to local folks. And also, instead of having people with your families go and spending the entire weekend to go somewhere, they can do that here. That, that's what we want to see, absolutely.
That's great.
Yes, sir. Mr. King?
Yeah, Mr. Lewis, I, I'm excited about this project also. You, I was a little, little disappointed here that the greenways won't be part of this, this.
Yes.
And you and I have had discussions about that. And I was going to make that a part of this, this commitment letter, but I don't want to jeopardize this project. I just, I know we've talked about how that, you know, when these, the other complex goes in, that this will be there. I just want to make sure this is there in place. And, because this is a very important thing for the community. I even had, it occurred to me about the bridge that we're looking to put in there. I called Dr. Green one morning, said, "We need to make sure that the greenway is able to go underneath this thing."
Absolutely.
And she was taking care of that. So, what, what, what are your thoughts? What can we do? Because I would like to see that greenway, is it, is in your plans, start over at A, by the AB Tech building?
That's right.
And I'd like for it, the terminus to be over by the new school.
Absolutely. And that's our plan. And I think for this, I would feel comfortable you putting that in the letter.
Okay.
To have that, absolutely.
I would, I would most definitely like to ensure, and I know your commitment is there.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that we get this, this done.
The greenway is a very important feature of the overall project, and the accessibility is huge. And I, I agree totally.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Chairman Gant, I'd like to move that we make the greenway a part of this commitment.
Okay. Okay, I'll take that as a motion to consider the commitment of the spec building proceeds as we have talked about with that amendment. To add a, a number five, the greenway master plan is, is formalized as a memorandum of understanding that it will
Own, own the portion of this property that we're discussing, on the 90 acres?
Yes.
Yes.
But in long-term, we want the whole
Absolutely.
So, but let me, let me ask a question about that, okay? One thing that we see, and for those that have been able to pull this up, you see there's a lot of conditions that have to be met in order for this to happen. You know, spec building's got to sell, the, you know, secure the 90 acres, but the 2.4 million from the TPDF is, is, is big.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't want to do anything, because I believe you're committed to completing that all the way, and, and I know where it's starting, over at AB Tech, all the way over at the back of the school.
Right.
And so, you've not, I mean, you've kept your promises on all of those things so far, as far as, you know, the entire plan. I don't want that to be, I don't want that to muddy up the TDA going in there and, okay, well, now you've got to complete this as part of it. I have that concern. I respectfully, you know, I understand, you know, that that's going to be part of it. I, I just don't like putting that in there. And I'm concerned about that being muddying up the, the TDA application.
Yes, sir.
Well, we're not, we're saying it's a qualifier for our money, not, not, not a qualifier for their money. They've already got their application in, right?
Yeah, it's contingent on
Okay, let me recognize Dr. Green. Go ahead, you've got something. Then we'll recognize you, sir.
What I heard, and make sure that I did hear it right, was that the greenway portion was on the 90 acres, not the full property.
Yes.
Okay. Well, why don't we just, a suggestion, why don't we just say that a condition five would be commit to the greenway master plan as depicted on their
If it, in any way does jeopardize us, I'll withdraw that. But based on Mr. Lewis's comments, I'm
I'll, I'll
Okay, there's been a motion by Commissioner King, a second by Vice Chair Frost, to add to the mode, the recommended action, which, let me just read it out. Dedicate 1.3 million proceeds from the sale of a spec building to match 8.6 million in donated property in cash to develop a six-field ball complex on the old Inca BASF plant. Conditioned on spec building, sales to private investor. Inca Youth Sports secures 90 acres by donation from Fletcher Partners. Inca Youth Sports secures 2.4 from TDA product development. Number four, Inca Sports secures 1 million in private donations. And number, the new number five is, and Inca Sports commits to completion of greenway as depicted in their master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's seven. Did you say six? There's seven fields.
Uh, seven, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
And this would be just on the 90 acres?
It's getting better all the time.
I have a quick question for the county manager.
Yes, yeah, let's ask all the questions and if you had some comments.
So, I think, I think I posed this question earlier, and do we know, like, in this long-term capital plan that we have, there's been this mysterious item over the years called, at least mysterious to me, called the Sports Park Master Plan. And I have this general notion of it's going to be, the idea is that it would address some of these sporting demands that we have in our community. And there, there's not, it's not just baseball and softball, it's others. Do we know in that plan, were there, were baseball and softball fields part of this?
They were part of this, but it also includes soccer, so this takes care of a portion of that need that we would, we've had listed in, you know, in the generic term.
So, would I be, would I be too Pollyanna to say that in, in investing in this project kind of reduces the, the price tag, should we ever get there? And should we ever, you know, but we still want to find out what the commu, you know, we still have to do our assessment and ask the community what their needs are before we get, we, right? That's the only thing, and it's not your, it's the only thing that kind of bugs me about going forward, not your, not your, not you, is that we really don't have an organic field for what the citizens are asking for. We, we've got common sense. We, we know, we know demands and stuff like that. But I still really want to hear from the community about their, their concrete wishes for, for sports and recreation. But in the event that this is down the road, we think that the, the price tag could potentially come down.
We do think the price tag would come down, and we are talking with folks to do a survey just to answer the question that you have, to see what the real needs are
Great.
Throughout the community, and what everybody thinks about it. But this does meet a big need that
Big, yeah.
And it's really nice to frankly thank you, Mr. Lewis, to do it with somebody else's money.
Somebody else has to operate it, right?
Okay.
As for that, I'm sorry.
Mr. King, go ahead.
One of the reasons I, I wanted to make sure we got the, this portion of the greenway in is to get buy-in from the community, because there, there is a desire to have that greenway in the Inca County area. And, you know, although it'll be longer than I, I have every confidence it'll ultimately be completed, but this will be able to say, they can see this portion, and it'll be there with this complex and, and people who don't have children or don't play ball or whatever, it, it adds another element to a sports complex. They, you know, they, ultimately, they can see what they've got. I think the, you told me the whole thing is like a two-mile
Correct, approximately two miles. That's great.
The completed one. And so, do you have an idea about how long just this portion would be?
We'll say in approximately half.
Okay, so that's very nice, that's
Yeah.
Do have dollars and cents on that. How much would it cost?
For the greenway?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Will Bowie, WG La Engineering. The total greenway cost for the entire length was a little over 250,000. So we're looking at approximately half of that cost for what we're talking about on the 90 acres itself.
Basically 125,000?
Yes, approximately.
Okay, so, so you, so I want to be, I want to be clear. One of the things I, you know, that I, I do want to get to some of the public concerns about that property. I want to make sure that y'all talk about that tonight. I want it on the record. I want people to hear that and hear it clearly and loudly from you guys. But I, this is just something I've been excited about for a while, and I, I want to, and, and I'm asking a lot of questions because I want to make sure that it's, I'm, I'm supportive of it, because this is a, a, a public-private partnership. This is a way to take, we've got a building that hadn't been on tax rolls forever, and that, that money can leverage 8 million. And, and the need in that area for that, I mean, I understand the weekend, I understand, you know, that, that part of it, but the need for the week in that area is what the, what I hear the community so excited about. It's a place where my kids can go, and my church league can go, and my little league can go and, and do this. And with the apartments that's being built, with the school, with the things, the need there, there is great. I, I don't want to put any additional burden on you, you know, but, but it sounds like that you're, you're, you're willing to do, to complete those trails behind there with no additional cost to the county taxpayers at all. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
We're, we're, we're committing to 1.3, and you're willing to do that with no additional commitment from the taxpayers?
That's correct. All the money is, is going into a pool
Okay.
That's drawn out.
And you're willing to do that?
Correct.
Just a, just a note too, from some conversation I heard before, is you had thrown a number of 20, 20 teams times 12, which is 240 teams. And a lot of times when you hear that for the first time, you think, well, that's crazy, that won't happen. Last weekend, in, in, there were 280 teams on the soccer fields. 280 teams coming in and doing that, so.
Right, that's right.
You know, 240, when you look at the popularity of, especially girl softball, you look at the popularity of those leagues, it's, it's crazy what grandfathers will spend on their, you know, granddaughters and daughters. I mean, it's just
Girl softball Girl softball, and the ball, bat and ball, I think I'm saying that right, is by far the fastest growing sport.
It's a title nine, yeah.
Okay, so, at, at what point in time would be the best time for, to, to, for him to discuss the concern in that area, what has been done as far as due diligence? Is that now?
Yes, sir.
That's that question?
Sure.
Okay, the due diligence on that property, the safety of that property?
Sure.
You know, I'd like for you to really dig in on that, and, and with, with light of questions that may, and obviously, you know, safety's paramount for our children.
Yeah, without a doubt. I think anything, when the property, when we first learned that this additional 200 acres was going to be available, we, we took on a very strong due diligence to investigate the property and look at the landfill. We, we had hired Billy Clark, who is the environmental attorney, he represented us. We were comfortable after looking at the property and doing the due diligence. I can tell you the executive summary, I can't tell you the, the detailed summary, but, but we were okay with that. We've had the conversation since day one with the folks at, at Deener with Solid Waste and the Brownfields about this being a planned sports complex. We're, we're comfortable. If at any point we're, it becomes a situation where you cannot do it, then we would not go through with this project.
So, is there, is there a way to, since we're doing an amendment, to do some kind of friendly amendment, to where the engineer or someone could just provide that information to us?
Sure, we have that, absolutely.
Put that, put that, put that.
Let's just attach that to our minutes tonight.
Okay.
Would you do that?
Sure.
When you say the engineer, I mean, has there been, there's been, there's been a phase one, or beyond a phase one completed for the specific property?
We've got, we've got the report, and it would just be a matter of emailing it to you, be glad to.
And, and so Deener's reviewed the, and is it, is it a phase one, or is there more than a phase one that's been completed for the property?
It is, Commissioner Newman, it is much, much more detailed than a phase one. As Mr. Lewis indicated, they had done significant due diligence with local environmental firms. I'm a civil engineer, so I'm speaking a bit out of turn, but they had done significant due diligence with local environmental companies, studying the site, studying the conditions, studying the monitoring results. There are tons of groundwater wells over there that have been monitored for years and years and years. In addition to the, the reports that have been prepared, there's also been significant discussion about Brownfield's agreements. Brownfield's agreements, one of the primary reasons that one would enter a Brownfield agreement is to gain buy-in from Deener and the various divisions in Deener, that they have reviewed the property, and they're comfortable with the uses that will occur on that property going forward. The Brownfield for the former plant site has been formalized and completed. The Brownfield agreement for where a portion of these ball fields will go is in process right now. As Mr. Lewis had indicated, the division of Solid Waste, the various departments in Deener have all reviewed those end uses, they've reviewed the reports, they've reviewed the data that has been monitored for years, and they're quite comfortable with the uses that are being proposed here. So, the documents we can provide you are extensive.
And, and so, I would assume that they wouldn't actually render any specific decision on a project like this until you've applied for actual permits to, you know, carry a project forward. So, there's not been an official decision by Deener to say, yeah, you know, you're, you're good to go. It's been more of a feedback from them based on the reports that have been done, and just sort of asking them to provide you with advanced guidance about whether or not they, they, you know, they, they would believe a project like this would be viable based on the information that's available.
That's partially correct. Most Brownfield's agreements establish end uses that are suitable and acceptable on the piece of property. As I mentioned, the, the Brownfield's agreement for the plant site, the former plant site, that has been completed and commensurated. While we have a plan, it's just a concept plan that's similar to the ball fields and the rest of the recreation facilities. The reason that we have hesitated in moving the Brownfield agreement forward on this project is that there has been some hesitancy or unknown as to whether the entire sports complex would move forward. As Mr. Lewis mentioned, there's a significant portion of this property that could be developed and placed in industrial or commercial use. If that were to go forward, we wouldn't want to enter into the Brownfield agreement in that form or fashion. So, that's one of the reasons that the Brownfield agreement has not been completed at this time, but it can be completed at this point and move forward. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay, so I want to go back to, because I want to, I want to, I would like to do a friendly amendment to Commissioner King's that, that would include some verification of the, that, that site. I think that needs to be done, I think that y'all, y'all are going to do that. I don't think that, and I think the public safety is, is something we're all very concerned, so I would like to put that with the, the number five, that we make sure that we receive the documentation prior to disbursement, that, that it does pass those.
And if I might add.
I would add that to Commissioner King's.
I'll second that.
And if I might add one, one more level of comfort that you can take from this, we can't begin any work on that property until the Brownfield agreement is completed, until Deener and Solid Waste have signed off on this, until all of our other permits have been secured and acquired.
Sure.
And so, those are the next processes that we will go forward with, and we will gladly provide you all with copies of those permits as we proceed forward.
As you know, I'm a, I'm a big fan.
Okay, so, I've heard a friendly amendment, number six, was it, can I paraphrase it? Provide acceptable documentation of due diligence and usage as proposed?
However you would say that regarding to the, I really don't know how to word that. Dr. Green, can you help with that?
Well, how about environmental due diligence?
There you go, that's good.
Beforehand.
And can I just add, maybe add a little language on that? So, I mean, so it's, you know, the state does have to review this all from an environmental perspective, and, you know, they have a lot of expertise, obviously, in, in core responsibility on this, but it is, it is, I mean, it's an interesting project in that it's, it's this private nonprofit organization, but there is significant public investment, taxpayer investment into it, both from Buncombe County, and I certainly see the TDA funding, I mean, that's their decision around doing it, but that's taxpayer money as well. So, so the vast majority of this is coming directly from, from Buncombe County taxpayers for funding of it. And, and, and as Commissioner Frost said, it's part of what makes it interesting, is that there's a kind of a, you know, it is, it is a real public-private concept, but, you know, in light of the amount of funding that would be coming from Buncombe County directly on this, I mean, I would definitely want, you know, our staff to look at this, too, and make sure, you know, in addition to the state's review, that we feel comfortable with the site as well. So, when the information's provided, you know, to the extent that we have expertise within, within the county management as well, I would hope that we could get eyes on that, and just sort of, you know, verify that, yeah, we feel, we feel good about investing, we love the concept, and we feel good about, about this being a, a great place for such a project as well.
So, I would be willing to add the county verification to that.
Okay, well, let me try this.
Long-winded way of saying it, but you get my point.
No, no, that's so good.
Provide, provide the information, but we're also asking for a kind of staff-level review of the information that's, that's provided.
Okay, so, we've got, you've modified a friendly amendment that I had provide documentation of environmental due diligence for proposed usage, and then you want to, we add acceptable to all, to all federal, state, and local agencies.
That's good.
Would that work? Would that satisfy your, your going?
I'm happy with that.
Okay, I guess he'd have to ask you first for the amendment to the amendment.
I'm happy with that, if you're happy.
Then we ask, is this right? I guess.
I'm fine, that's right.
Commissioner, and then the second by Commissioner Frye, is that all right with Commissioner King? Because you have the motion on the floor.
Yes.
All right, so.
Can I say one?
I got one more.
Can I say one more?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Frye.
I'm looking at all these issues, we're down to number six. I was hoping this is number five. I would like to see if we couldn't find some kind of time limit on this issue, because I don't know when the building's going to be sold, but have an idea when your funds, if, if you can get the grants, if you could get the other monies, and you raise the money. Can, are we going to have any time limits, or is this just going to be ongoing?
Frankly, we will be bringing you the issue on the spec building, and it could be up to three years before we receive the 1.3 million dollars to provide to them.
But if they get, if they get the money beforehand from, or from.
If they get the money beforehand from TDA, I think that's one reason we were looking at the money.
And the other grant money, and then you can borrow money from the bank, but you would still have to raise a million dollars, too, so there's a lot of ifs in this whole package.
They've raised 750, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of, which came first, chicken or egg, but I think we're trying to line it up so we can give you a path to get there.
Right, thank you, yes.
Can I say?
Is that acceptable, Commissioner Frye, to?
Yeah.
To leave, okay.
All right, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
I really want to thank you. I think this is a home run for Buncombe County, but I really, really want to thank you, because I think we're kind of seeing a sea change here, you know, so much support from all seven of us, and in the past, you know, some have been bogged down by added budget cycle, non-for-profits, administrative costs, so I really heartily applaud you coming before us for this wonderful project, where maybe as we go forward into the future, we'll be accepting of other projects.
Okay, good. Any other comments or questions?
I have a couple of other questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you. I guess this is to the, to the, to the staff, but Martin, feel free to chime in as well, but, so, I hear you saying that the, it's anticipated that the fees from, user fees in essence will fund the ongoing operations for the property, and that no, no additional recurring funding from public sources is anticipated to be needing just the upfront capital cost to get the, the project constructed. So, could you, could you just say a little bit more about, about that, about the business model? Are, are some of the other sports complexes run in this specific way? And, and just say a little bit more about that, and then, and, and then, I guess also to our staff, have we looked at any of those business models or business plans and kind of verify that? We, we also agree that, you know, because just sort of thinking ahead, you know, is there going to be a day when someone comes back to this body years from now and say, well, it just didn't work, and we built all this stuff, but, you know, it needs X amount of public funding to keep it going? And what are the chances of that?
Well, and, yes, I'll be glad to try to address all of those. And one comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman, so far, this has been what I would call a very private, not a public campaign to raise these funds. We have not started a, a public with, with doing fundraising. We are actually on, we, we are going to foundations, we're on two foundations this month for their board for seeking capital, but on the, that will be an ongoing to try to get corporate sponsors to come in. But as far as the day-to-day, I would see me, and I think the board would agree, that as you raise those monies, you would have a capital account that would go into improving the facilities. One thing that we haven't talked about is on the, the three upper fields, the, that would host, potentially host, girl softball tournaments, and it would be nice to potentially have turf on those fields. If we can raise the money, we would put turf on the infield, which would again increase the, the playability and, and improve the facility. But as far as the operating cost, you would have the sponsor, potential sponsorship of fields, you would have banners in the outfield, and then you would also have the, the tournament fees as you come in. Yeah, we, we feel very good that those will, will cover the cost.
And, and, but can you point to other, other sports complexes like this that are, are operating that way? I mean, I would just assume that probably the vast majority of places like this are just sort of publicly owned and operated, and, and not to say that doing some difference not better, I mean, break the mold, do something more innovative, I'm totally open to it, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious if there are others in North Carolina or South Carolina that are using this model that, that have sort of proven out, yeah, you can, you can run this kind of facility, and it's, it's, it is self-sustaining.
Brown, Morristown, Tennessee has seven fields on the outskirts of the town, and I so happen to be going through there one day, and a friend of mine from Virginia, their niece was coming to, to play there, and they played round robin. You play until you totally win or lose, so they were still playing at 10 o'clock at night, and I was there about 10:30 that morning, so these girls, you know, it was a very long day for them, but it, it works, you know, so they, I mean, they were utilizing all seven fields at the time that I was there, so.
Okay.
And they pay, they do pay coming in, they're travel teams and, and pay coming in, so. I don't know if they stay a lot, but they do pay coming in.
Right.
So, so did you find kind of not-for-profit models without public subsidy examples when you were looking around?
We looked at, at many different facilities. I would say the vast majority of facilities that we were looking at, they're actually either owned by the city or the county. This is going to be a little bit of a different model, and then it would be totally run by a nonprofit. To sit here and say XYZ does it and did it that way, I can't.
And, and Ms. Green, I mean, have we, have we looked at these plans? I mean, and if, and, because I just want us to be going in this real clear-eyed, you know, and if there's going to be a public subsidy needed for it, maybe totally justified, but I just, I know a lot, you know, and, and, there's been a lot of different ideas floated in the community from time to time about different recreational and cultural amenities, and the idea of them being self-sustaining, and a lot of them turn out to just, you know, not come together. And so, I just, I just want us to be really realistic about the business plan for the project, because I think it's a great project, and I'm just, and, and you can't always, you know, every great endeavor involves a little bit of risk, so I'm not saying there's no risks we should be willing to take, I just want to understand what we can know about other models, and, and, and as we think about the project and our role in it.
It's actually been a while since we've looked at that, and most of them are government-owned recreation programs. The operating costs in, in baseball and softball are generally very well-covered with the fees. Now, the capital is not, so having the capital contributed here is, is a big portion of it. That's not true of every sport by any means, it just happens to be true of especially traveling ball. I don't think even basketball covers as well as baseball does, but it has been three or four years since we've looked at it, just to be.
And so, I guess I just, like with the environmental piece, I guess I would just ask, as this goes forward, I mean, I would really appreciate, you know, all the input from, from you guys, and also have our staff look at that, and, you know, and just advise us on, you know, if we, if we cover the capital cost, we do feel confident that that's our, kind of our one-time upfront contribution to the project, and, so, thank you. And, and the one last question I guess I have on this is, is, you know, in the, in the long run, I mean, I like the fact that there's this private group that's going to be managing and, and doing fundraising for it. Are there any other things that we should be thinking about on the front end? I mean, in light of the significance of the public investment in it, to ensure that, you know, and not even, you know, this is, this is not asking about, you know, I fully believe in, in the intent of what, of what the team is, is trying to put together, but when it is 10 years from now, 20 years from now, and it's none of us talking about this, I mean, are there some things that we, we should, we should do to build in some sort of long-term public accountability for the use of the property? I mean, there may be people who have ideas for what they want to do here a, a long time from now, and, and in light of the original funding that's going to come from taxpayers, is, are there some ways that we can assure that kind of long-term accountability in preserving the public's value in it from its investment?
I'd like to comment on that. I'm not that familiar with the sports and, and these, these activities, but based on what I'm hearing, Commissioner Frye, from you and, and other people that I've heard from, there, there's a, a very good economic impact, and long-term, that's one of the buy-ins for me on this, is the economic impact, and particularly to the Inca Canler area, to our hotels there and our merchants, and, so, to me, that, that is a, a big buy-in for me, is the, the economic impact of our area.
Well, let me, can I go back to Commissioner Newman's thought? Maybe we should add a seven, and that would be provide commission a presentation on budget, and.
Sure.
What's a good way to word this?
Business model.
Business model, budget.
Could we have an operating agreement, or based on what?
Actually, I just sent this thing an email to pull out the historical information that we have, and maybe we can, not necessarily make it a seven, but bring that back to you, and so that we can show you what, what research we've done.
I'm sorry. So that we can show you what research we have done and bring that research current for you? Would that be helpful?
I, I think that would be helpful. I mean, this is a tremendous amount of money, it's, it's almost as much money as we give to community funding, and I, I think that would be really helpful, not, not to stand funding, and I think that would be really helpful, not to stand in the way of this, but, you know, and also, this is taxpayer dollars, and, you know, down the road, everybody always has great intent, but, you know, there could become a time when, you know, you do need something again, and to protect the taxpayer's investment, I don't think we should shut the door on that.
And maybe it's just, maybe it's partly just fleshing out this, you know, we're saying that the property has to be donated to the nonprofit organization, and, you know, which is being incorporated, and so maybe part of the diligence from our side is just, you know, looking at the bylaws of that organization, assuring that, you know, that that board is charged with managing this property in the public's interest for the purposes that we're all talking about today, that even though there is, you know, some, I think it's just maybe doing due diligence on the incorporation of the organization, making sure its mission, you know, that it can't stray from the mission that we're talking about, it being, you know, these investments being made for.
And, you know, one of the things we could do is ask that, if this organization were going to ever change the use of the property, that we, and I don't know how you feel about this, but that we would have some first right to vote yea or nay on that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So that we don't change the use without a board protecting their resources.
I think that's a great, I mean, we all know you, but a lot of taxpayers don't.
So, why can't we, as part of a friendly amendment, just make that a seven, and script it however we need to script it? I think Ms. Green might be able to help us with that.
Any future change of use would require approval by the Board of County Commissioners? Is that reasonable for you?
Sure. Well, I'm trying to think, if you've got a board, it's a seven-member board, and I hear what you're saying, which is reasonable, how could you? I guess the flip side of that is, if you, if we go out and we're successful in raising another $4 million, and I don't see that use changing.
We'd love for you to invest that other $4 million, let's just start with that, but if you were going to change it from uses softball and baseball fields, that?
From sports, from sports to industrial, we'd have to, yes.
For some other commercial purpose, I mean, that's kind of the idea, it's like, what if in 30 years, this land is like, this land's worth $50 million for a shopping center, you know, and it gets converted in some, from a public purpose into a private purpose? I just want to make sure this board that's set up, you know, that that won't happen, and I guess, and I don't feel like we have to come up with all the solutions on the spot here, so we're thinking about it, so I guess I'm just kind of asking our staff to think about that, and as we proceed on this, if we can make sure that we're aware of how the board's being set up, and that we, you know, that we make sure that it, the intent of this will be perpetual, and can be used for some private purposes, I guess, I don't know what the best solution is, I just kind of wanted to air it, and I think the staff can figure it out, working with you.
We've got three open spots on this board.
We don't want to get into that tonight.
I'll write some up for you.
But a question, just a question, at the time that the money is actually dispersed, will it be voted on at that time?
Well, I do think we need to put the conditions we're going to have on here, because we're going to TDA, and I do, and if we just put as a condition, any future change of use of the property would require approval of the Board of Commissioners at the time the use was going to, being proposed to change. I mean, times will change for all of us, but I think that does say you've got to come back.
And you're talking about from recreational to commercial, not from softball to wiffleball?
Maybe we could get?
Commissioner King, go ahead.
Get our attorney to voice something here for us.
I just wanted to ask, is this entity going to be 501(c)(3)? Is this entity going to be?
501(c)(3). Okay, so, just so you can all know, if the land gets donated to that entity, that it cannot thereafter be changed to anything, to a non-charitable purpose. So, if you wanted to, if they wanted to, let's say, make it into a humane society or something like that, which is also charitable, then you might want to have them come back to you for approval also, but in terms of, you know, what I've heard about changing it to a commercial use, 501(c)(3) would not be able to do that.
Well, how about this as a proposal, why don't we put, if usage of amateur sports changes, the, any change would require approval of the existing Board of Commissioners? That work for, that way, you know, we wouldn't be getting into softball versus baseball or anything like that?
I don't think.
Is that agreeable with the board?
Would you be okay with recreation sports?
Recreation sports is fine, yes. Okay. Well?
I think these are good questions.
I think we're good, I think we're ready for them.
If that is, okay.
I just wanted to get one thing in the record, too. And then, so, you know, in case anybody thinks, we know we're putting poor Martin through the hoops. So, I mean, am I right, Dr. Green, that we're getting ready to do something pretty unprecedented, both in terms of the amount of, you know, grant, as well as that, I mean, because I guess the next biggest grant we've done, well, the bigger grant we did was with the park, but that was our, that was our land, you know, partly, right? So, this is, this is really stepping out for us, to invest this much in something that we don't have control over.
It is, I think with the PACT Spare Park, we did a couple million with a couple of housing projects we've done, significant amounts, but this is, we didn't build this building, but we did pay about $225,000 toward the carrying cost on it, so, the 1.3 million, it is a bigger step than we usually take, but it also is going to give us more resource than we've had for ball fields ever.
I just wanted to kind of put that in the context for where we are.
Yeah, this is a whole new.
Arguably, packed place would be, we do not have ownership of that.
No, we didn't.
That's almost the same situation at 400-plus a year.
And if you look at what you're doing for the citizens, I mean, a lot of our youth play ball, and we lack them out. I always thought if you, if you keep them engaged, you avoid them being in trouble in a lot of other places.
You know, that hasn't been said, and I'm glad you said that, because I really did want to say that, is that, you know, the kids need a place where they can go, and that's the exciting part of this, is giving people, kids, something to do that will keep them engaged, and keep them excited, and keep them here, and, you know, and.
I just want to keep the spirit going of community funding.
All righty, any other questions or comments from the board?
My last question, Martin, so, big request with TDA. If the TDA doesn't fund it substantially that amount, do you kind of have a Plan B for, because it's such a big percentage of it, is there?
Right.
So, we're, obviously, if we're supportive of it, we'd be encouraging them to be supportive of it too.
Absolutely.
But, I don't know, I mean, is it, you think the project will be viable if it's, if that particular piece is not close to that number?
Brownie, I would say between now and when we learn of that funding, I could probably give you a better answer, I think today, right now today, we've got $750,000. I hope to have more, and feel like we will have more, between now, the application, we make application on September 9th, which is next Tuesday, and then we're supposed to know by mid to late October the results of that, and I think at that time, that would be a decision, we would sit down with the board and our property owners and say, what steps do we want to do?
Okay, good luck.
All righty, any other questions?
But I want to say thank you, Mr. Lewis, I know how much time you've put into this, and I've worked with you on some as well, and as an Inca-Canler resident, it's really a good thing that you're doing for our community out there, and thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, I think this is one of the best investments we can make, we have a moral obligation to take care of kids. I don't think the kids care who owns it, I think kids want a place to play. And I think, one thing that Buncombe County, we have historically done is partner with people. We are the model across the state for partnering with nonprofits, for partnering with people to achieve more than we can achieve separately, and I think this is a prime example of that. You've got some skin in the game, TDA hopefully will have skin in the game, we have skin in the game, and you are offering a plan that I think, some wonderful questions from the commissioners tonight, you've got a way to handle it, and it's not going to be just, well, we'll come to that when we get to it. I think you've thought it through, you're a very good business person, you've got great people around you there, this is what it's all about, this is what government can do well, and I appreciate you doing it. Okay, any other comments? If not, let me try to read the, what I've got here. Okay, the motion originally Commissioner King seconded by Vice Chair Frost is to dedicate 1.3 million proceeds from the sale of the spec building to match a total of 8.6 million in donated property and cash to develop a seven-field ball complex at the old Inca BAS plant. The complex includes 90 acres of land that will be donated by Fletcher Partners. The donation is subject to the following seven restrictions. Number one, spec building sells to a private investor. Number two, Inca U Sports secures the 90-acre site by donation from Fletcher Partners. Number three, Inca U Sports secures 2.4 million from TDA Product Development Fund. Number four, Inca Sports secures $1 million in private donations. Number five, Inca Sports commits to complete the greenway, the greenways as depicted in the master plan.
For 90 acres.
For the 90 acres, for the 90-acre.
Right.
That work, okay? Number six, that Inca Sports provides documentation of environmental due diligence for proposed usage acceptable to all appropriate federal, state, and local agencies, including Buncombe County. Number seven, if usage of the recreation sports, if usage of this project changes from recreational sports, the any change would require approval of the Board of Commissioners existing at that time. Does that sound like what we're talking about? Is that close? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, friendly amendment, all those amendments good with the original movement?
Yes.
Commissioner King, okay. And the second, Vice Chair Frost, both have to agree to any friendly amendments. Okay, so I think we've worked through those. Any other questions or comments about what we have before us, which is the seven conditions to this original proposal? If none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We have approved the allocation, thank you, by 7-0 vote, thank you for working through it with us.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have board appointments, agriculture advisory boards, are there any nomin, have two vacancies? I nominate Terry Wells, any other nominations? All those in favor of appointing Ms. Wells, or Mr. or Mrs. Wells? Ms. Wells to the agricultural advisory board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then Ms. Wells is appointed. Civic Center Commission, are any nominations?
I'm a reappointment of Mr. Max Queen and Mr. Wes Wright.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Mr. Queen and Mr. Wright are appointed unanimously. Inca-Canler Fire and Rescue Department Firefighters Relief Fund Board.
Nominate Michelle Wood.
Okay, any other nominations? All those appointing Michelle Pace Wood to that board, say aye.
Aye.
All right, no, any closed session tonight?
No.
No closed session. Announcements, the next regular meeting of the commission will be September 16, beginning at 4:30 in Room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. Commission meetings can be seen on BC Charter Cable Channel 192, ATT Uverse Channel 99, live on BCTV Channel 192, and on Buncombe County Org during the meetings, or online anytime after the meetings. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So do we.
An a motion by Commissioner Belcher, seconded by Vice Chair Frost. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. By 7-0, we are adjourned.
All right. All right, y'all have a good event this weekend, I'm sorry.